The November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. Next, we'll take communications from the public. In order to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed in a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak during this time? No? Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting held Thursday, October ninth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to agree.
Commissioner Conrad?
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Rice? We have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion passes. Next, discussion. Item A, discuss and participate in focus group meeting number two with Ardura Group to receive information regarding the process to update the comprehensive plan and provide feedback regarding the future of Friendswood. Aubrey, would you like to kick that off?
Yes, sir. So we have Lada and Krishna here tonight. They're with Ardura Group. So they're here to kind of give y'all an introduction tonight, explain how the process is going to work in updating the plan over the next year. And then you all filled out some questions on the survey, so they have the results of those questions. We're just going to kind of dive into those a little bit deeper. I have two examples of some comprehensive plans from other cities that y'all can look at. So this is, the goal is to have a nice, pretty document for the city of Friendswood. The comprehensive plan should include like general guiding principles, visions on how we want our city to look. And it's general in nature, but then hopefully we'll get some more specific maybe goals and things to work towards as part of this process. And then next year, we're going to be, we'll be updating the zoning ordinance to incorporate any changes that are needed that come out of this study. So we'll let Lada and Krishna take over.
Thanks, Aubrey. Good evening. Thank you for having us here. My name is Lada Krishna Rao. I'm part of the Ardura Group. I have Krishna here, who's a planner supporting me, who you don't see, is we have Adam Eaton, who'll be working on sustainability, resiliency, civil infrastructure. He's the civil engineer in our team. We're also partnering with Kimley Horn, who will be looking at downtown and urban design aspects for the city. And then we have, we'll be working with CDS, who'll be doing the marketing and economic development. So you'll see some of those reports come your way. Hopefully, when we come here next, we'll have a summary of our findings. So again, thank you so much for, you know, giving us this opportunity. We're really excited. A little bit about myself, don't hold that against me, because the more I talk about Pearland, people tell me we don't want to be like Pearland. But I was the community development there for fourteen years before I retired, about seven years back, and then into the private, went to the private sector. So since then, I've been helping small cities, you know, with comprehensive plan zoning, any other planning activity they have. So I've been in Texas for about twenty-five years now, came from Connecticut. I was there for thirteen years. So I bring a little bit of that Northeast sensibility, but I'm trying to, you know, kind of adapt more to the Texas way of doing things. But I do see that small towns everywhere are very similar. So, so next slide, please. So like I said, that's who we are. I don't know if we need introductions, but you want to go down the table? You all know each other, so we don't need to do that, yeah.
Do you want, do you want them to enter, like, do you want to know a little bit about them?
That would be great, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm Tom Hinkley, Chairman of Planning and Zoning. Lived here for thirteen years. Three kids in the school district here, so local business owner also, so.
How you doing? I'm Travis Mann, official timekeeper. I've lived here about twelve years or so. One, one boy, and love Friendswood.
I'm Marcus Rives. I'm a local designer. I've lived here my whole life. Two grown kids, and that's about it.
Willie Anderson, I've lived in Friendswood thirty years. I have four grandkids in the school system.
Marcia.
Marcia Conrad, been here thirty-one years, and I have eight grandchildren in the school district. Staying very busy.
Mr. Brown?
Brian Downs, been here twenty-nine years, no grandkids. Two kids out of, out on their own, been retired.
Thanks for the introduction. So just what we have planned for you today is just kind of go, um, give the introduction, talk a little bit about the background of why we are here today, what is this grant about, and just a little brief introduction about the comprehensive plan and how, what are some of the things that we're going to look into, process and schedule to give you a sense of how long it's going to be, and then public engagement. Public engagement is a, is really a very big part of what we do. So we'll kind of go over some of the activities we have planned. And then we did, you know, thank you all for filling the questionnaire. So what we did was, we have the raw data, but also summarized it. So I was hoping that when we do the summary, you guys can have a discussion and then talk a little bit more about what, you know, tell us a little bit more about some of the things that we saw in the summary. So with that, we can get started with our, the background slides. So the, this comprehensive plan and this zoning ordinance update is funded by the grant called an RCP grant. It's called the Resilient Communities Grant that is awarded by the land office. And the part, one of the focus of the grant is, because it's coming from resilient communities perspective, to focus on hazard mitigation, sustainability, resiliency. But they do, they do, it gives the city an opportunity to look at the comprehensive plan, look at how, what needs to change, and how hazard mitigation and resiliency is incorporated. And, you know, it's becoming a very real thing for Texas now. The flooding, the fires, the heat index, the hurricanes. So how do we build a community that withstands all these natural disasters for the future? And then also, the one good thing that we like about this grant is it doesn't stop there. So you, you don't come up with a comprehensive plan that stays on the shelf. They really want to amend the zoning ordinance. So part of the funding is actually almost, you know, fifty percent of the funding is towards the second half of it. So I think they're kind of forcing cities to have some regulations in place to make the comprehensive plan happen. So that's why this community engagement and community buy-in is going to be important, so that when the rubber meets the road, that's when the ordinances and regulations change, all of you know where it's coming from, right? Because sometimes, you know, during the process, we, it's hard to remember why we are here. So this plan with that community engagement will hopefully reinforce that it is a reason, and the reason is, you know, documented for the future. So, yeah, let's move on to the next one then. So just a little bit about planning history. I mean, the city has been very active when it comes to master planning, comprehensive planning. Some of the things that have happened in the last twenty years include, you know, the staff has been very proactive in looking at future land uses, updating them as and when things happen. A parks, we have a parks plan, an economic development corporation had a strategic plan, downtown improvement plan, the CIP that the city works on, master drainage plan, there is a plan called Vision Twenty Twenty. I think that was your council strategic plan. And then pavement management plan, citywide traffic study, water systems, wastewater master plan, impact fee study. So all these planning efforts have been done in the past, last twenty years. So one of the things we're hoping this comp plan will do is at least acknowledge them and then kind of review some of the recommendations. The GLO does require that we look at all these plans and summarize them and come up with, you know, recommendations and make sure that they're still relevant, and then incorporate that into the comprehensive plan. So it's not just land use, but all these other things that go with land use. And of course, Friendswood participates in the Harris Ain Galveston County Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we would have to look at that and make sure that those are incorporated into the comprehensive plan, or at least as recommendations. So really, what is the purpose of a comprehensive plan? You all are planning the zoning commission, so you probably know this, but again, the purpose is to, I guess, come up with a shared vision for the community, something that the community, you know, you get a bind from the community, so that when difficult decisions are made by commissions like you, there is something to back that up. We talked about how resiliency is going to be part of it, and as you know, comprehensive plans guide future land use, infrastructure, and mobility decisions. Also, it's a financial planning and policy decision that helps the city to plan for the future, looking at assets, service delivery, aligning it with state and federal priorities. Like I said, both counties have a plan, so this would kind of align with that. And then not, what we believe in is, again, going back to, you don't want to have a plan that sits on the shelf. So the second half, the third part of the plan, which is the implementation strategy, we do focus on, and we break the, all the recommendations into, you know, steps. And then we will come back to you at some point and say, okay, now these are like these hundred steps that need to be taken. How do you prioritize them? You know, we have exercises, hands-on exercises, so that it gives guidance to city staffs, to the city council, to the city manager as they move on. So that is the, I think, the exciting part, that when you realize, what does it take to get to this vision that you have? And then another important thing is, this plan will set the foundation for future grants. A lot of GLO grants, Texas dot grants, Texas Parks and Wildlife, they all look for, do you have a comprehensive plan? Do you have a vision? And they want to make sure that that comprehensive plan is backed by the community. So that's why we have this whole community engagement process, to make sure that, you know, that the plan is backed by the community. Again, we get the, where do we get the authority? From Texas Local Government Code gives the authority for cities to adopt a comprehensive plan. And then especially cities that have zoning, the thought is that the zoning should be in conformance with the comprehensive plan, which means that every zoning decision you make, you would be able to tie back into the comprehensive plan. So some of the themes, you, you'll see that in most of the comp plans, this is also a GLO requirement, starting with, it's just not land use, but respecting the city's downtown, city's culture, connectivity, housing and neighborhoods, infrastructure, resiliency, even tourism, open space, economy, character, and anything else that goes to make the city would all be components, one way or the other, into the comp plan. So again, why are we doing this now, other than having funding for the plan? I mean, as you all know, you've lived in this area a long time, and our region is growing. HDAC's predictions are that in the next, by twenty fifty, it'd be, we're going to grow by three million people. That's like almost an entire Los Angeles moving in, right? But, or, or the city, the Houston area doubling. So where are these people going to go? And so they have some predictive analysis there, and by maps, they show how this growth is going to happen. And as you can see, it's going to, it's going to just radiate from Houston. So Friendswood is already very red there, so there's going to be pressure. And so this gives an opportunity for the city to, you know, see how you want to embrace growth in the future, you know, kind of plan your own future. And you do have very limited vacant land, so what does that mean? What are redevelopment opportunities? And again, we have heard that, you know, the regulations, there might be some regulations that have just been carried on from the past and haven't been modified or updated or modernized, and this will give an opportunity to do that when we jump into the second part of it. And then, of course, hazard mitigation would be a big deal. So the, the, the report, as you saw, it's going to be a very, you know, hopefully something that's interesting. The modern comp plans are getting away from your business-looking documents, more pictures, more graphs, you know, user-friendly, and just easy to implement. You know, so you will have a lot of things, like a zoning equivalency table, right? If a property is located in a land use that's designated as mixed use, what could be appropriate zoning there, and what could be appropriate uses there? So something to give whoever is administering the plan or making decisions like you all, some concrete guidance, not just saying, oh, this is a single-family residential. What does that really mean in terms of the character, in terms of the aspirations of the people, in terms of tree preservation, whatever that means? And I did, like I said, we, we have a team of urban designers who will be helping with this plan. They will be focusing more on character and urban design, so looking at what are the major roadway corridors, what kind of image would you like for that corridor? Is it going to be welcoming to the visitors? Pedestrian connectivity was a big thing that we heard already. So how do we make your downtown or other areas more friendly to pedestrians? Not just pedestrians, but multimodal, you know, biking, people in wheelchairs, people with strollers. Now you have scooters everywhere, so, you know, is that something that you want? Golf carts are another one that a lot of communities are actually designing for golf carts. Richmond, Rosenberg, you see that there, you know? So things like that, there are other ways of people, that, that people can use to move around, especially when, you know, you have limitations and you can't drive a car, so. And then, again, focusing on downtown to try and see how it can be, have that unique historic character. What is it, and how can that be preserved? And then how can local businesses be supported and attract local businesses? And just make people aware of downtown. I don't think you have this problem because you're a tight-knit city, but cities that are linear and long, a lot of newcomers don't even know that there is a downtown. There's a great example, right? Everybody on the west side, they're just so removed from the core of the city. So how do we make that happen? You know, it starts all the way from when you get into the city from your highway. What is the messaging, right? So just start, starting to think like that and see what character are you promoting, and where do you want people to, what are your destinations in the city? So like, and like I said, we'll have some marketing experts there with us. What they will look at is, just in addition to understanding the demographics, look at what is happening regionally that's going to affect Friendswood, the socioeconomic analysis, and what are some of the trends in the city and the region? And as you know, what happens in the city? Cities are not islands anymore, especially like one city just moves into the other. So what are some trends happening? What is happening in your neighboring, neighboring cities is going to affect you too? So looking at all that and then understanding the real estate market. That's not to say that the cities can be what they want to be, what, what they want to be when they grow up. There was a councilman in Pearland, when I first got, you know, they, he did say, he said, "We're not going to succumb to the market, we are going to create our own market." There is some truth to it, right? But on the other hand, market forces are important too. So it just helps you to make informed decisions. I mean, so, so it's really important to know what, what's happening in the market. And then even looking at the supply and demand, more, more than supply and demand, the gap analysis. What are, what does your housing affordability looks like? Who do you want to live in the city, and can they afford to live in the city? And that's a problem every city in the country is facing now. They don't want, you know, the smaller homes, homes for the worker, working class, so to speak, but where are these people going to live, right? And you do need the labor force. So that's a very interesting discussion that's happening in a lot of suburban cities, especially since we work with small cities. We see that, yeah, there's going to be some, say, conflict that would need to be resolved. But again, you can decide how you want to resolve it. And then, yeah, just looking at some market-based solutions. So the, the process would be just looking at data trends, again, looking at all the demographics, where are the jobs, how is your commercial property performing, interviewing local professionals and, you know, local businesses, downtown businesses, and then looking at, again, when you start talking about older cities where you have very little land, existing neighborhoods are one of your biggest assets. So trying to make sure how that still remains, you know, strong. And disinvestment is the worst thing that can happen, because sometimes it's a slippery slope, and you just go down and down. So trying to, so they will look at what are some of the areas where you really, really need to focus to make sure you maintain your strength and desirability as a city. It could be all the way to recapitalization of infrastructure. How old are your sewer lines, right? And are we, what are we doing to make sure that some of that gets addressed, though? And then, of course, continuing, looking at policies to encourage new development, reinvestment, and you see that maintenance and report of existing property. Lot of times, like I said, cities focus so much on getting new stuff that they fail to address what's there already. So the process, the first part is approximately, again, this is a little bit of a moving target, but about twelve months for the comprehensive plan update. And like I said, the next part, which is as important, is another ten to twelve months when we jump into the zoning ordinance update. And we, when we talk about zoning ordinance, we might even look into working with Aubrey and her staff to see if we want to do some kind of a unified development code that makes it easier for developers and citizens to refer to. I think you, you don't have a develop, unified development code, so your subdivision ordinances are separate, your zoning is separate. They're all different chapters of the code of ordinances. So the, what the UDC, as it's called, is brings everything together, so that people are not missing important things. Tree preservation, that's part of development, dumpster screening, that's part of development. A lot of these, lot of times, all these are separate sections in the city code of ordinances. So hopefully, we can, you know, start talking about what it looks like in, as we move along. So we're in the mobilization process now, so we broke it up into, you know, kickoff, working with the city council. We've had our meeting already. The current city is just for us to look, gather data, look at what the existing city looks like, and then we have started our visioning activities. I'll talk a little bit about that. And then future cities, basically, recommendations. And then, once we have the draft recommendations, and of course, you know, coming back and looking at implementation strategies, and then finalizing that. So we're hoping that by next June, July, you will have a new comprehensive plan update. That's the hope, so. But the GLO also has this guideline, so they will be reimbursing funds based on the schedule. They have a contract with the city now, right? Okay, next. So, and we're really excited about our public engagement plan. You know, so our, our motto is to meet people where they are, how they want. So we start with the city council. We had a kickoff, just for them to set the foundation. We will be working with the comprehensive plan advisory committee. That's in the process of being put together by city staff and city council. Once we have this committee together, we plan on having at least four meetings with them throughout the process. So I think they were appointed by the council already, right? And then we also have about ten focus groups or one-on-one meetings, and these could be HOA associations, it could be ISD, it could be county staff, it could be city staff, Planning and Zoning Commission, or other groups that you may have. So as we go through the process, we'll find, we'll work with staff to figure out who these focus groups could be. It could be your senior, senior citizens, high school, we, we work with high school children to try to see what, to see what they think the city should look like. And then we have a couple of citywide events. We already did one, which was the Halloween in the park. We were there, we had a stall, as you can see, trying to spread excitement and got some feedback from them. Flyers will be, you know, posted. We will have a questionnaire online, right? We, we already have one, and if you scan this QR code, it's going to take you to the questionnaire.
And we also had the staff focus group meeting.
Right, and we already had the staff focus group meeting too. And then we're also excited about this interactive map, where there's a map, and people can go and hover and type their comments, like, kind of find specific location. And then you can also see what other people have said, so. So it's, it's an interesting tool, very visual, and gives people an opportunity to just, you know, whenever they have some downtown time, they can just go into, you know, from their desk, participate in the process. But like I said, we also believe in face-to-face, and that's why we have all these other focus groups, where we would really like to go and meet people where they want, how they want, so.
Do you mind me asking a question here, real quick?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So you have the, the digital, social media, but it, how do we get out to people that, that don't access either of those, right?
Yes, and that's where we will be seeking your help. So we are open, like, what, how do we get to these groups? Who are they? We don't mind going and meeting, you know, people at the senior center or in a library setting like that, having, basically just going through the questions that you would see in the questionnaire. You know, those are your basics, what analysis, what do you like, what you don't like, opportunities, threats, and what is your vision? Those are like the five basic things that we ask. So, yeah, so we, if, yeah, we would, we have been to Lions Clubs, Rotary Clubs, you know, I'm a Rotarian, so, you know, I always bring people to the Rotary Club. So, yeah, because I know that, I mean, you'll mean, I have to give you this example. As a Rotarian, I was like, not happy with my fellow Rotarian. So once Aubrey knows, I, I took one of my code enforcement officers to talk to the Rotary Club, and she did a great presentation. And then he's like, "Everything looks so clean, why do we even need code enforcement?" I'm like, "You didn't, you didn't get it, right? It's clean because this lady is killing herself on the weekend trying to keep the city clean." So people, you know, until it's broken, people don't realize how hard it is to keep it running. So, I mean, Rotarians are smart people, but sometimes they just don't connect the dots. Yeah, but, yeah, so, yeah, we'll be working with you all to see who we should be reaching out to, because every community is different.
The survey that you all took is available online on the website now. It's available to anybody in the public. So if you want to share with your friends and family, I mean, we can get, if you want flyers. But you, I literally went to the website and screenshotted it, so you can, like, pull it up as a photo, and somebody can scan it and, like, get it on their phone. Like, it's so easy. So I, Communications did a push of it the weekend, right before Halloween in the park, and we had two hundred responses, like, I think by that, like, in two or three days. So I think it's, we're getting good traction with it.
Very good traction, yeah.
I don't know what we're at now, but.
You mentioned it, but I think the senior, going to one of the seniors' meetings might be good, just because some of those might be the individuals that don't get online much, right?
Right, and their needs are different, and you want people to settle here, retire here, you know, and, yeah, so definitely, yeah. They are the, they have more expendable income, you know, you don't want that going out.
Hopefully.
That's what my Economic Development Director told me.
I think the opposite of that is the families with young children, which are actually the future of Friendswood, and their busy lives and what they're doing, and they're not coming to maybe the park, and they're not doing stuff because they're driving kids from sports and doing all that stuff. We have to get that out, and, and, you know, I, I'll do a, you know, it'll be a little poll of my own, little, but how many of them already know that this is going on? I, I would say not many. So while we might have traction, that's good. I think that the success in getting everybody behind us is that everybody feels like they've had their say.
Yes.
And I think that's really important.
True. So the Halloween in the park was a great event, like, all the kids were there, so we were able to call their parents and took some great feedback there. But definitely in ISD, I think we'll try to work with ISD and see if they can push something with the kids out. So hopefully, they'll be on the seat pack too. So hopefully, they'll be on the CPAC too, when they can help us.
Yeah, then we're just gonna have amusement parks and water slides and, and I don't know if they, if they, you want their input, but.
Well, and to be honest, that's what we heard of the Halloween in the Park, right?
Shocker.
I know, so who do you call it, right?
We do have a, we do have a Friendswood High School student. She's a senior this year on the advisory committee. Um so hopefully, like, if she has a class or a group or organization that we could meet with, um I think it'd be great to get, you know, high school students. Because in twenty years, you know, she's maybe, you know, moving back here with her family or, you know.
In five years.
Yeah.
Rebecca's on the committee too, isn't she? Rebecca Hellenberg?
I think so.
Yes, she's uh as F D E D C, yeah, uh she wears several hats. Um, yeah, and we do have uh Nolan Correa. Uh he's more facilities uh with F I S D, and then we do have, um I think it's Alex with C C I S D. So, uh we have representatives for both school districts.
I think school districts are really important because actually, they have a better feel. They know the pulse of the community, right? Uh it's really important to have them and it's interesting to see what they have to say that I might never know because I don't have kids in the school district anymore. And they see the demographic changes, the, you know, the socioeconomic changes and, yeah. Right, so, um, yeah, just like I said, we will be um working with the CPAC. It's basically a temporary advisory committee. We'll be relying on their expertise and advice to guide us through the process. Uh and then, they will represent the community because, I, you know, they all live here, work here, own businesses here. And hopefully bring their perspectives into the plan. So I think we, we have seventeen members now, like, and like I said, four meetings. And the CPAC meetings will kind of follow our, the phasing that I talked about earlier. Right, so now, we are here with you all. Again, uh so the interactive exercise, yeah, you all did it on your own. So what we have is we tried to summarize it and then give you an opportunity to discuss. Normally, you know, we would do it here, but since it's already done, it saves some time and gives you more opportunity to discuss it. And um so, we will do that and then, please, you know, um ask others to take the online questionnaire, spread the word out. If you can show up at community events, that's great. Uh it's always good to have, um you know, P N Z. And then, we'll have regular communications that you'll keep you updated. So we do have liaisons on the CPAC too, right? So they'll also bring stuff back to you and then just keep an eye on the website updates. And then, in any other way you can wanna get involved, like, lead us to the right focus groups. I know, in, in um individuals that might be interested to participate, we definitely look forward to that. Next. So, um I think what we're gonna do is, um can we just summarize the, this, we'll, we'll go the, the summary of what we heard from you all? So, um.
Before we jump into that discussion, is there specific um things that we're bound by in order to get the grants that we're talking about? So, we, we can come up with all sorts of fantastic ideas, but it, are there, like, what exactly do we have to have? You talked about resiliency to survive natural disasters and, and whatnot. But is there, is there a delineated, uh are there delineated issues that we have to address in order for the plan to go through it and receive the grant?
So, not really, and that's the beauty of this grant, that it doesn't, uh you know, have any specifics. Like, there are, the G L O R C P grant can be used for other things, one of which is like flood mitigation or stormwater. They're very specific, they'll say you have to have your first full elevation, two feet above the floodline or whatever. This one doesn't, it just has those broad categories, like, they want us to look at community character, land use, transportation, infrastructure. Just your usual suspects, so to speak. Um so they really don't have any specifics, other than the grant is really focused towards the zoning ordinance, the ordinance part of it. And so they just don't want cities to do a comprehensive plan, they won't reimburse for that.
So, and that's exactly what I'm kinda getting at, is if there are specific requirements that we need to address to fall in line with the grant, that's great. But to me, I know we, we keep talking about the ordinances, but I feel like it goes vision, plan, then ordinance. The ordinance will, will support the vision and the plan as long as we've got buy-in from the community. So, so to me, the ordinance is like the, it's, it's the latter part. It's not, I wouldn't try to come up with ordinances now and then figure out what we want, it's gotta go in the other direction.
So, yeah, as you saw in the schedule, we can hope that the first half, twelve months, we have the com plan and the vision and the guiding principles and recommendations in place before we jump into the ordinance. Because otherwise, how do we know what to change?
Exactly, okay.
And then, that way, you, you have a background information, foundation. And then, these, the recommendations of the com plan will actually guide your ordinance changes. And you know what, you might find that not much has to change. But at least, um one thing that we were talking, we would like to do is at least get it unified together. Because just by doing that, you'll see, it'll start seeing a lot of conflicts. Subdivision ordinance requires something, tree mitigation requires something, you know, setbacks are something else. Uh engineering standards are totally different from your subdivision ordinance, so at least we can clean that up, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but the, the good thing is like, there's no restriction that you have to do something, yeah, they, they've left it pretty open.
Okay, great.
We did, we did get into a little more detail with our contract, um and the R F P, like, we, like a population study, a housing stu- like, there are so- specific items that we plan to tackle. But it's all covered under the.
Yeah, so the G L O's deliverables also uh matches the comprehensive plans. Uh because we compared the G L O deliverables that we received at the time of kickoff, meeting with the G L O. So they are also monitoring, so population study, base study, existing plan assessment. So we, we are making sure that we meet all these milestone deliverables um and the comprehensive plan elements.
Perfect. I just want, I didn't want us to get too far along as we went down on your, your plan of, uh you know, getting outreach and then moving along. And then, we're, we've got this awesome idea, but we haven't addressed requirements. As long as there's not requirements for it, that's great.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
So, just going back to the question there, um so this was question number one, if you go to the next.
Oh, we can go to the summary, since they have the questions.
So we can just go to the summary, yeah.
Yeah, you just skip all those.
These were some of the questions that you saw. So just kind of, um what, uh I have to confess, I use chat G P T. Otherwise, I couldn't have done it today, right? But um it makes sense, though, I did read your answers, some of them, no. But really, like, a- and, you know, tell me if you don't think this is right. And this is where I want to have a little bit discussion too. So, the first thing that comes up is like a sense of community, right? So, um just that people are friendly, caring, um the nature of the people who live here is important. Then you have small, small-town feel, excellent school, safety, affordability, quality of life values and smart growth. My biggest question to you all that I would like to ask is, when you say sense of community, right? Let's talk a little bit more about that. What is it? And the small-town feel is important too. I can see, well, having four-story building is not a for- small-town feel, I'm just making it up. But I think if we can just kind of go over some of these and talk about what exactly is that? So that we can pinpoint and then write recommendations to maintain it, right? Yeah, please, please, yeah.
Cause I, I, that was one of my responses. It's seeing Brian at H E B, it's seeing Joe at a after-school event, because we have family that are all involved. The, the, some of that community comes from being a reasonable size. And so, if we start getting too big, then, then obviously, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see people out and about. We're not gonna meet at community events. So we have to main, to me, we have to maintain that sense of community is not becoming downtown Houston. There's no sense of community there, right? You might have pockets within a building or a, a square block because people go to the same restaurants. But it's not the same as here in Friendswood, where we will see people when we're out and about, we'll know who they are. Uh we'll, we'll support this, the high, high school football game, we'll have, you know, a lot of people at that game because we have a sense of community. If we start separating ourselves out, we won't attend those things, you know, and then we'll lose that sense of community. That's what I meant when I said it.
Makes sense. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I think it, I mean, you know, you walk in the hardware store, you know who owns that hardware store. When you walk into a restaurant, most of them, you know who owns that restaurant. It's not a lot of chains, it's, it's, uh, you're supporting your neighbors.
And I'm gonna stop at a table and say hi to someone that I know before I sit down.
Exactly.
I think some of that also has community pride. You know, like, like traveling overseas, you know, people in Italy are like, where are you from? We don't even say from the United States, we say we're from Texas, because they know what that is. But the same holds true for Friendswood. So if you're out and about in Houston or something, and somebody asks where you're from, well, we're from Friendswood. But somebody else might say, like, there was something on the news report this week, Friendswood uh Walmart. Sue told me this this morning, my wife said this. So there's something on the news about the Friendswood Walmart had somebody who got attacked. And she's like, there's not a Walmart in Friendswood. But you know what I'm saying is, we, we, we meet people and they're like, oh, we live in Friendswood. Oh, where do you live? Heritage Park. We're like, oh, it's not Friendswood. We, we're kind of Friendswood snobs, I guess. But we take pride in our community.
Absolutely.
Maybe more than a lot of the other communities that I know of, at least.
The, the one thing that is, is uh maintain that sense of uh smallness is having one junior high, one high school.
Yeah, I agree.
And when you start having multiple, then it sort of gets fragmented quite a bit. But I know that someday that may change, but it's been nice these thirty years, but.
Well, we, we do, we technically have two high schools. We technically have two high schools.
Yeah, I know, but, I know.
They're not in Friendswood, because the post office says it, doesn't it?
I- is there a planning or a design element that contributes to this? Um and I can see that, uh, social events, definitely, right? When we went to the Halloween festival, that people said they like having events like that, even though it brings people from outside, but that's where they meet their neighbors too. So if you start thinking about designing things, right? And um the, the value of having community places, like, uh, I go back to the Greek Agoras, right? You had a common place that people could hang out, it was safe. This library is a great place, right? And, you know, the, one of the design studios, the library studio, we are talking about, what is the role of the library? We're talking about a new library building. When that happens, I guess, is, is, does, does it have a bigger role to bring the community together? So, when you start thinking of that, what are some other things, like more tangible land use or infrastructure or mobility kind of things that you can think about? Like, proctored open space, definitely, but cultural facilities, is there something that's lacking that could bring people together?
Well, we don't have a town center.
Yeah, I feel like, I feel I read that in a couple of different places and I've already given my uh vision. If I could own the world, um and have all the money in the world, I, I think that town center where you can go park and then you can walk from shop to shop to shop. You can go see a movie at the movie theater. Um, you know, the teenagers are gonna get dropped off there and they're gonna be hanging out and going to get ice cream. That little spot right there, that's what keeps that sense of community. Because now I don't run into Brian at H E B, I run into him there, right? We, you know, hey, we're gonna head down there, why are we going there Friday night? Well, cause I know everybody's gonna be down there and it'll be great to see him. And we don't have that right now, and even though we've done a fantastic job with our downtown district. We, it's way better now than it, than it was before. I still don't drive to downtown and walk around. There, there, there's just not, it's not set up that way right now.
We don't have enough things within walking distance of each other to warrant that yet.
And, and I've been one to say, let's not put a parking garage where, where we're gonna park our truck and then walk in the heat all over the place, because no one's gonna do it. I wanna be able to park my truck there and then be able to go in that little area. That's why, like, the town center, not like parking here or, or, or parking down at the uh Stevenson Park and walking to Ace Hardware, it's just, I'll never do that, right?
I think some of that is start, is starting to happen on this side of town. I mean, you get, you got uh restaurants going in, uh building next door. You have a potential hotel going on, going in down the road. So I think this side of the, eventually, this side's gonna be in the very near future. Some of it just takes time.
Part of that is what, because what we've been doing in the downtown district. I mean, I think that's definitely making an impact, for sure.
I think one of the issues we have is, we have a lot of people that, that just do not work in Friendswood. They work in Houston, uh like my wife works in Katy. And when she gets back, she doesn't wanna go anywhere. She just wants to stay in this small area. And she's not even going to wanna drive over to the new place on twenty-three fifty-one, or on, on five twenty-eight. She just wants to go within two or three miles of the house, and we just don't have that. We, we have a few places, but but just getting back in the car is something she is not interested in.
I can understand. My office is in the energy corridor too, but I don't have to go every day, so.
We've had, we've had a big improvement in the last sorry years too with some of the newer buildings in town. We brought in some of the medical facilities, which makes things a little bit easier. But I think having a, a true community center is another thing too. Uh a lot of, you know, we've got a good summer program for children, which a lot of chi- children are turned away from that just because we don't have the space to, to host enough, so. Just having a good, and the seniors will definitely take advantage of that with all their programs.
Hopefully, once the city center's completed, that will add a lot. Yeah, so I think we, there are some recurring themes, so we can discuss more. Small-town feel, that to me is closely tied to your urban character, right? What does that mean to you, okay, trees? What else, like, um?
I think you hit it, not five-story buildings.
Can you live with four-story?
Well, some people can't.
Really, because that's a big, you know, that's a big deal, right? We don't wanna be those consultants who show you four-story building and this is your downtown. No, that is not Friendswood downtown.
It's more of a human scale.
So, small, yeah. Like, I, I mean, Texas is great, it has all these nice downtowns, which are, don't have, they don't have high rises. Macadoches, Sagin, I mean, Marvin Falls, Frederickburg, beautiful downtowns. So I think, I, to me, I don't agree that every downtown needs to have four-story building to make it work, but that's me, no.
All those places you just mentioned don't have a hundred percent humidity and ninety-nine point nine percent temperature.
They do get hot, though, the Austin area.
Hot, but that's a different kind of hot.
That's true too. What else, like, when you talk about small-town feel? Any, any um thoughts about how the houses should be designed? I know somebody actually in the Halloween festival said, front porches. Is that something that, y- you know, would help or does it matter now?
It looks good, but not too many people are gonna go out on the front porch when it's a hundred degrees outside.
Yeah.
The first house I bought in Texas had a big front porch, and I thought that was cool, but we never used it.
A lot of people invest in their backyards too, so. Now, if we're gonna go hang out, am I gonna go to the front porch in that little spot or back and jump in the pool and relax?
So, so what else then? What is small-town feel?
I think a big, small-town feel, and correct me if I'm wrong here, is when I go from here to there within Friendswood and I'm not stuck in traffic, right? So I think that.
We were just talking, Krishna and I, right? Yeah, traffic, yeah.
There's a couple places where you're, it's just a nightmare to, to, you just know when you go there, you're like, ah. And now, there's a couple places for me specifically where I hit this light every time I go through it. Used to not even be a light there, now I stop at it every time I go through. So, that's gonna happen, I get that as we get to a certain size, but that's something that I wanna do, address as well. What is our target size? Because we're gonna run out of land and we can either go up, which I don't know that, that's what we want. Or do we start to redevelop what we currently have and make it nicer? And that's how we grow, um. And that's how we grow, um, and evolve as a city. Just getting bigger and bigger and bigger and packing it in, right? So, traffic is gonna be an issue, I think, that for everybody. Uh, but turn lanes and opening it up the best we can while we can. Because once you start building right up onto it and that grows, there's nothing you can do. You're just gonna sit in longer lines.
Going back to the housing, um, density that you mentioned, right? Obviously, density is a big, uh, component of the small town feel. Small towns have smaller homes on decent-sized lots, not McMansions on fifty-foot lots, right? What are some of your thoughts on lot sizes, density? Um, some cities, and the Marble Falls, for example, started allowing people to have, uh, what they call as, uh, cluster housing. So if you do have like a three-acre lot, uh, and you're just one person, you're able to build another couple of homes for your kids or whoever you can control or you, you rent it to in that three acre as long as you have some safeguards, right? So they are densifying, but not like cookie cutter subdivisions. So they're giving opportunities for these larger lots, lots to stay large. That goes back to the subdivision regulation. The first thing they did was get rid of the fact that every lot should have frontage on your street. That is what adds to a lot of streets, right? If you just have a comp, kind of a compound and you go in and through a driveway, if you can allow three homes, maybe that'll work. But you see how that one little subdivision ordinance that says every lot should have a, have frontage on the street has changed the entire character of these small towns. So, something to think about.
Single-family dwellings.
Yes, and that's the second rule, yes.
It's an interesting thing.
Which you can have more than one home on a lot, and that both of them have to meet the setbacks. Like, as if they were on separate lots. Other, it, but you could have like accessory, you can have accessory dwelling. And we don't like, I think some cities don't allow accessory dwellings to be more than fifty percent or, you know, a certain percentage of your main structure, which we don't have that either, so.
We do have lot size because of Over Klein, they're trying to, did that ever pass?
Yeah, they're, and they're big lots. They're ninety-foot and a hundred and thirty-foot.
They were trying to shrink it down.
Yeah, we didn't change.
So, yeah, we, we have lot sizes, we have to.
I think one of the, uh, a big characteristic of Friendswood is our large lots. Um, like, we've literally been called out in some of the, like, small town, uh, it was a conference like out in South Carolina or something, they literally brought up Friendswood because of our, uh, our minimum lot size for a single-family residential is ninety feet. Um, which, I mean, I think a lot of cities allow like seventy and eighty-foot, um, lots. And that's, I think, one of the characteristics that I think the residents here wanna maintain. I mean, we have a lot of older, like, large lot subdivisions that don't have sidewalks. They're open ditch, you know? Two-lane asphalt roads, and I think that is part of the small town.
Character.
Yeah.
I was gonna say not having curbs and gutter, um, actually, yeah.
Not that the subdivisions that do, I mean, I mean, they have a feel as well, but there's a lot of, uh, a lot of older homes on big lots.
Right, so let's just move on to the next one, then I, we have a few. So, you know, when you talked about areas of improvement, those are some of the things that came up, which you have already discussed. Lack of the central gathering space, uh, walkability, uh, and infrastructure. Uh, communications and transparency was an important one, so hopefully, like, throughout this process, we'll make sure that we are transparent. Um, I guess that's more of an administration issue. I don't know that we'll be able to solve that in a comp plan, but still, it's good to know. Uh, senior services and engagement, so that, depending on your demographics, it, you know, looks like there is a substantial um, percentage of elderly population, so it becomes important to plan for them. Um, so, uh, look, we'll look at that and then drainage and flood management again. Um, that's kind of, uh, like I said, it's also part of the grand.
Which I'm surprised that that came up. I, I, I think we do, especially since Harvard, you do a fantastic job with drainage. Very confident, having gone to a bunch of the meetings, uh, for years there, that, that, it is, it is not overlooked, I can tell you that.
For sure, but the thing is, people are not gonna notice until we have another big problem and then they go, oh, it didn't work, or, oh, okay, it did work pretty good. That's when, you know, that's when it hits the fan, is when, when it happens.
So in five hundred years.
Start paying attention because they're dumb and happy until it happens.
Actually, and then when it floods, they don't even recognize that it doesn't flood.
Well, we generally only flood in very severe situations.
And I, I think that's gonna be less even.
Effective to a certain point, depending on where you live on the street, you know?
And one of the things, uh, the team will look into is modeling, you know, hundred-year flood, five-hundred-year flood. But it's just not predictable these days though, and that's the problem. So, but, yeah, um, and then affordability and taxes. Um, why, it's why it's important to us is land use is a big deal, right? So, any thoughts on keeping it affordable, lowering the taxes, but still giving residents the quality of life? Like, what is the balance that you're all think?
At some level, there is a balance, but communication, because I talk to people all the time, they say, oh, yeah, hey, let's keep this a small town. I don't want any businesses here and I don't wanna pay any taxes. And I'm like, well, that'd be great.
Same thing I was gonna say, yeah.
So, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to start.
No, no, that, that's, that's exactly why I wanted to talk, like, what is the balance, right? You can't have both. Um, because you're just putting undue burden on the existing residents if you don't have, um, avenues to increase your taxes or revenues. So, um, you know, you've been to other cities. What have you seen that you feel, oh, maybe this might work in Friendswood, you know? What, what balance of land uses, you know, or?
We definitely need some walking paths.
Walking paths.
Yes, I mean, there's a lot of areas of town you can't, you can't get from one, one part to another because there's no path. Um, but, I mean, I'll just say, we're not in a bond, bond-friendly market right now. And so I, I think that getting a lot of this to actually come to fruition is gonna be a hard task.
What could be your revenue sources? Just based on your experience, profession, living here?
I think we see strip centers. Are, they are starting to fill back up, but there's still a few. There's the one over on Friendswood Lakes or Friendswood Parkway that's never had a tenant in it, the one with the old seven-eleven. That building's been there for what, ten years now, something? But, uh, but I, I think in Friendswood, we have that mentality. We don't want a lot of businesses. But we do want a lot of restaurants.
We don't get restaurants.
We want social places. And maybe that's, maybe we've become a restaurant town or something, I don't know.
Well, at, at, at the same time, you don't, you don't like to see a building just sitting there unoccupied. But at the same time, uh, next door is a prime example. I mean, the, the property tax revenue off of that was what, eight thousand dollars a few years ago? Now I think it's on the rolls for what, eight hundred thousand, something like that?
We, we know we need business.
The building increases property tax value. But it'd be nice to see those buildings populated with a, a good, good local business.
And that's a mixed use also, so it's apartments.
And I'm not advocating for this, but I've seen in other towns where everybody works at the fill-in-the-blank, right? There's a, a high employee, uh, some big business, I don't know if it's the factory or whatever, but everybody works there, a lot of people work there. And they kinda take the burden of the taxes for the town. I've seen that in other places. I'm not saying that's what we want here, but right now, we have, you know, you, you have a strip mall that employs two people at each of those places. And they're small, real small businesses, which I do think we like and we want. We even mentioned it earlier. We walk in and we know who owns it, but that doesn't offset the same, at the same rate that maybe that one, you know, out on twenty-three fifty-one, something goes in out there. A lot of people can get, get employed there, get a big tax base out of it. Cause we do have, that's like the last bastion of, of land where we could do something like that.
Well, I think the closest we have right now will be Castle. Cause once that's complete, they'll have five hundred employees in that building.
Yeah.
Which one?
So, Castle by the premises.
Yeah, biotech.
We get all these medical office buildings that are being developed, they're useful up and that'll be a lucrative industry.
Currently, our largest employer is FISD still. And then the second, used to be the city, I don't know if it is anymore with UTMB.
Yeah.
Yeah. HEB is up there.
Traffic. All that's gonna be traffic too.
Right, and, and, you know, I'm glad you mentioned that because some of these other cities, their biggest thing is we want an HEB here. We don't wanna drive fifteen minutes, but we like our small-town character. We don't want traffic on our streets.
Right.
The minute you get your HEB, they're gonna come from fifteen miles around minimum, right? So that's the balance, I guess. I guess locating these uses maybe closer to the highways so that it doesn't affect your internal streets.
Industrial area.
And I think that's where your land use map is gonna be when we get to that point. When the land use and transportation are so interrelated, right? It's gonna be important that your market study and economic analysis is gonna say you need some more tax levying generating properties. So the question is gonna be, not do you want it or not, where are you gonna willing to locate it, right? So, but that's, that's a good for, forward-thinking, you know, um, exercise to have. Okay, great. Let's move on to the next one and say, so, future priorities again. You, you saw all this, I'm trying to see if there's something else that you wanna talk about a little bit more. Um, again, you see that tax relief and fiscal responsibility. How are we gonna lower these taxes? And then infrastructure projects, uh, older, infrastructure is getting older. You need to start recapitalization. Hopefully, there will be some grants that will open up. A lot of transportation grants are out there, um, a lot of mobility grants are out there, safe routes to school, um, SS four A.
Transportation alternatives.
Transportation alternatives, which will help you put sidewalks and connect downtown to other areas, so. Uh, so it's there, so as long as you have a plan and it's in your plan, it's easier to go after the grants.
A, a lot of the grants and things are, have federal requirements. And almost all the federal requirements have the requirement for LMI. So, which we never meet.
Now, actually, like, um, it depends, like, this grant, there was no LMI, but it was the resiliency. So you had to be in the county that was declared disaster prone. But then, see, but you can use this grant to do other things, right? So it's just like tying the dots.
What was LMI? Oh, low to moderate income?
Low to moderate income. And I think, um, HGAC's Livable Center had that too, yeah. Which, we were almost there, so there is, you can draw the boundaries so that, uh, I mean, they have tools that will help you to draw the boundaries so that you meet the minimum threshold. Believe it or not, Friendswood did, and we were almost gonna go after that.
Yeah, I, we do have, like, we did have like three little census tracts in town. And I know engineering has gotten a couple of grants and with the, and they met the LMI threshold, so.
So, when, when you're talking grants, I mean, the city, I, I think's done a fairly good job of, of, um, taking small amounts of money, combining them with, with other, other outside sources, grants, to get us even bigger projects. So is this gonna be a tool that we can actually use to go after some of those other grants?
Yeah, that's the hope, yeah. Like I said, we've al, we're already working with Tech dot TA grants, um, which, where we help cities put a comp plan or a parks master plan together. Now they're actually, um, going after grants to build the trails, um, tomorrow we'll know, right?
Today.
They were having an executive session. Tech dot was meeting today to decide which city should get this, so, so there are.
Friendswood's a good candidate, so.
Yeah, so, but that's the hope that with this, you know, there are, there are a bunch of grants out there. But once we know what the priorities are, it's easier to go after.
A lot of the grants require you to have a plan in place.
They do have a map, they, and the community.
That's why I was bringing it up.
Participation portion is very important. They wanna make sure that whatever is recommended is supported by your community.
And they want to upload the section of the plan that shows the community desire to have that particular, if it's a road construction.
So, yeah, so, so recommendations will be strategic in that you might see, why is this here? Because there might be a grant for it, so, you know, it might not be your top priority. So we try to do that, knowing that what they're looking for have the keywords, when they do the keyword search, they might. Yeah, and like I said, it, it might not be your priority, but if there's money to do it, then why not, right? Let's move on to the next one. Yeah, challenges. Anything else that you think should be added? Uh, I think we have most of it here. We talked about this, um, lots of identity kind of goes back with the character part, um.
I think one of the big things for us living here is the traffic and intersection management, because that's. At least for me, I think it is.
So is it traffic only on your corridors or is it inside neighborhoods too?
I think it's corridors.
I live, what, five miles away, maybe. Took me twenty-something minutes to get here. You know, which to me seems like a lot, when it used to take five minutes, you know?
Our engineering department meets with Tech Stop regularly and they have planned upgrades, but they're not our roads and so they're a little bit out of our control.
Yeah.
But that's part of the Friendswood Parkway extension and things like that is to help move people through the city.
Until we get to fifty thousand though, right?
Yeah, we don't keep our density down.
That, which was in my, one of my things on that was, what, what do we want? Because it's almost like we wanna stay under fifty thousand, but if we're gonna break fifty thousand, then we need to go a lot more. Otherwise, it's gonna end up costing us a lot.
A whole different set of priorities.
And, and we're at forty-two now, right? So, uh, we don't have a whole lot of land left, but we gotta know. And if we start stacking, that's gonna be a problem.
That might be a priority for the comp plan, that, you know, keep the population low, I mean.
As long as that's what we get, the vision from the community and that's what they want, right?
Right.
And that's what they're thinking and that, they understand that. I, I, I again think that we need that PR communication, everybody, that we do need a tax base, you're gonna have to have businesses. We, we do wanna keep less neighborhoods, because otherwise we're gonna break to fifty thousand. Well, less neighborhoods, we have land, where are you gonna put there? The tax base, right? So we, but we gotta communicate that effectively.
Right.
And right now, the people that I talk to at HEB, uh, at baseball games, they don't, they don't quite get that yet. They just want their storybook idea.
They need the consequences too.
Yeah.
If we go over fifty, this is what's gonna change.
Yep, yep.
Right, that's, that's true, yeah. Should that be up?
I mean, cause people are saying, oh, we have land out here, let's not put in an, another store or another restaurant, let's put in a neighborhood there. I'm like, okay, but then another neighborhood is another couple thousand and we, I don't know that we want that, but but that, but we have to figure it out. Maybe we do want that as a community. Maybe not as a P and Z, but.
Well, and the, the trend, like, the trends for development recently with West Ranch and Friendswood Trails and Avalon is the smaller lots. And so they've done the PUDs to allow the mix of lots. But that's a, like, if we stuck with our ninety-foot lots, that keeps your density down. And I think we keep chipping away at, you know, allowing more and, you know, more and more. Every time you say yes, like, it's chipping away at that.
True.
But that also brings in, what you mentioned earlier about, uh, where do our teachers live, where do our?
Hoppers that come in, that is there. They're saying this is what the market wants. This is how people afford houses.
But then they turn around and ask to build bigger houses.
But then they want twenty.
On the same lot, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, well, but they're, they're talking, we're talking twenty-seven-foot lots, forty-foot lots is what these develop. Is what these developers are saying is what the market wants, those three story type ones.
Skinny. But while they say that, I mean, there's, there's plenty of houses being built and and I don't think we need to rush it.
Well, and if you take the, um. Friend Friendswood Heights or whatever over there at Quaker, or Friends Heights, I mean, they built that one house. And it, it didn't sell, like, cuz it's not really, I mean, it was a twenty five foot wide lot with a. Basically, a three story house on it.
Kinda like clear like shores, just find it narrow.
So, it's, they finally had to rent it out cuz they couldn't sell it.
But that, that actually, that whole discussion came down to. Do we wanna allow what, six or eight houses versus an apartment complex? Was what it really came down to.
But if we at P and Z are kinda realizing this. Then imagine with the rest of the community that is not as involved, has no clue, so I think that communication and outreach. Maybe while we're getting vision, we're also educating the community as well. So that they can make an educated decision about what their vision is, so that when we move forward, we're carrying out what they want, but they know what. They want because we've educated them a little bit better.
Maybe what I'm hearing is when we reach out to all these focus groups, start with that education component, how do you balance, have that graph.
We need a press conference with Mike.
I'll make the presentation for you, you're. No, but I I like that, that talk about this, right, you want less taxes. You want your char- community character. Where is the revenue gonna come from? And who's gonna support your future infrastructure needs?
What's gonna happen if you hit fifty thousand?
Right, uh yes, and then, I mean, there are so many studies that show that single family residential. For your return on investment is not a good deal, right, because. Services that you need, the schools, the police, versus having a viable business there, but again, what type of business? They say mixed use development gets gets you the most return on investment, but what does that look like, you know, so, yeah. Lot of questions, so hopefully we'll find some answers, but again, it'll all have to come from the community. Which is a problem, the the normal resident does not understand. The fiscal implications of any land use decision. Let's see what else we have. Okay, so again, going back to the vision, right, these are some of the things that we heard, and we also collect these. Keywords and then come up, draft a vision for um the city that can kind of guide the comprehensive plan, but. Again, a strong desire to have that city center that you all mentioned, that kind of maybe makes it that. Gives that sense of community, um we talked about strip malls, um family friendly. Safety was a big deal, actually, so we'll start looking at what that does, what does that mean, talk to your police department, is it. A perceived sense of safety or or lack of safety, or is it real, so?
F P D's on it.
Yeah, so what is that, and um or maybe it's just the newspaper saying. That a store in Friendswood was robbed, where the store is not even in Friendswood. So, yeah, and then, of course, small town, uh local businesses, um and that was interesting, utility wires in the downtown district that helps, you know. And then diversity, um without losing identity, which was very important, um the overdevelopment. Commercial sprawl, less traffic, lower taxes and restrain building, so, yeah, quality of life. Anything else that you would like to add? I think that was the last line, yeah, seven fifteen, so.
I think that was pretty good.
Yeah, it was real good, I'm fired up.
Actually, you guys are making me nervous, you're. I was fired up before.
Any anytime y'all go somewhere, just call up Travis, he'll be there.
No, I mean, sports person.
Yeah, I I guess if we can just, at the end of the day, build a consensus and have a plan, I think people will have to understand that. It's give and take, like you all saw, just these issues, some of them are like so divergent, right? So having, finding that right balance, I think, is the key, but making sure that we're growing in the right direction. Which is why, one reason why more residential development is not helpful is it'll not help in the future.
One good thing is we're landlocked, we can't do a whole lot and with, I mean, there are, there's still plenty of spaces to build, but. Some point, it's gonna be finite.
Right, so which is another reason why your vacant land should not be. You know, built for a use that's not gonna give you the return on investment or that you need for the future, right? I mean, to me, that's a big argument, not not sizes, not just what uses it, and apartments definitely are not that.
Right, definitely something with R O I that still fits our our vision, uh you know. I think that's gonna be the difficult part.
I think having.
How do we lure those investors to give it the way that we're desiring, sorry, go ahead.
No, you're good, I I think having this updated comprehensive plan so that planning, zoning and city council can use this. And be on the same page too, because, you know, we, planning and zoning sends up recommendations and, I mean, city council's gotta. You know, we all have to be unified in our our vision, and so I'm hoping that having this new, you know, refreshed. Document will help us all stay on the same page.
Any questions, any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
You're welcome, you have any closing comments, Aubrey?
Um I don't think so, I just, the, so the planning subcommittee members, so Travis, uh Marcus and Brian. Are the planning subcommittee members that will be on the advisory committee, so uh they'll be plugged in.
The A team. Next, communications, um announcement of the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meetings for the remainder of the year. Thursday, December eleventh, twenty twenty five, in the community room at the Friendswood Public Library, where we're at. And then the annual retreat will be held on Wednesday, December third, twenty twenty five, at six P M in the second floor conference room at City Hall. And the first meeting in January is scheduled for Thursday, January eighth, twenty twenty six. Uh next, um received the September and October twenty twenty five D R C reports, Aubrey, anything to mention?
Uh no, both of those were in your back end material, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, same with the business reports. Okay, uh next, we'll take our city council updates from uh council member Matranga.
Your liaison.
Hey, good evening, I'm always glad, glad to be here, so this was really very interesting, and I thanks for your participation, support of the comprehensive plan update. So, and and city council's November third meeting, we addressed several uh P and Z related items. Uh first, we agreed with planning and zoning's recommendation. On the proposed zoning change of four oh one West Edgewood. I always wanna say Parkwood, but that's the other one, Edgewood. And to go from single family residential to community shopping center, we approved that. So thanks for your recommendations and your work on that, and we agreed. Uh we also then, to reflect that change, we had to also approve the change to the future land use map to to make that change as well. Uh as mentioned earlier, we did approve the formation of and the appointments for. The Comprehensive Plan Advisory Ad Hoc Committee, uh which we've already spent some time talking about. And and finally, we did on second reading approve several different.
I'm sorry, Mark, it's just the public, I can just hear.
Yes, come on in.
I'm sorry about that.
You're at the very end, but come on in. So we did, we did approve several cleanup items uh in our ordinances, including. The removal of some of the last little uh references to the sidewalk fund, which as everybody remembers. Was about giving commercial businesses the opportunity to pay into a fund versus installing sidewalks. And and I think we've seen it's better just to install the sidewalks uh for them, so we had a few little cleanup items there, we did take care, approve those. On second reading, so that's all I had, and I'll be hanging around at the end if anybody has any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we will continue with communications from comments from our commissioners, um we'll start with Commissioner Bounce.
Uh thank y'all for putting this together, thank, thank you for being here and supporting us and helping us through this, appreciate it. I I think it's. Something we really need to. Take due notice with, but we need to, like you said, communicate it out, get the information out every way we can. It's gonna be a key to us, or the key to the city accomplishing anything. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Comrade?
You know, everything he said is, it is education to have that vision and be able to implement. You know, some of the things that we talked about tonight, very important.
Mr. Anderson?
Um not much to add, but I did appreciate the survey, it gave me a chance to kinda reflect on some things and also see the other. She had a lot of the same thoughts, that was really good to see that.
Mr. Man?
As always, I'm fired up to be here, I'm really fired up now, because this is exactly the kinda stuff that I wanted to do here, so. We got a lot of work to do and I'm excited to do it, so that's it, happy to be here.
Mr. Russ?
I don't know if we've met since the planning conference, okay, so. Myself and Brian were at the planning conference along with Becky and Aubrey, and uh. I went a couple years ago and the hot topic back then was parking, this year, the hot topic, everything I was at was the comp plan, everything. And it's weird how those things change, but I'm very excited about this because I just sat through all those. Meetings and lectures about the comp plan and how it's changed some of these other uh communities and. It it seems like a really opportune time to jump on that. That's all I have.
Uh first, I'm uh, I'm really excited about Travis's excitement, so. But no, I appreciate everybody here, um and I hope everybody has a safe and uh enjoyable Thanksgiving. We won't meet till after that, so. And other than that, uh that's it for me. Okay, um Becky, you got anything?
Yes.
Karen?
No, just Thanksgiving, thankful for all of you and your service, we appreciate.
Thank you, Aubrey?
Um just the the advisory committee for the comp plan, we're gonna have our first meeting December sixteenth. So we will get one in, uh one meeting in before the end of the year, um and then get a path going forward after that, so. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, and with that, thank you everyone for attending this evening, and the November thirteenth, twenty twenty five Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now adjourned.